I've been instructed, clearly instructed by both of my colleagues, to rock and roll. No one wants to be here all night. I'm certainly glad to be back in the Rockdale County Auditorium for our in-person Rockdale County Board meeting this afternoon, as I am now calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, and it is now 7:00 PM. We are here at the Rockdale County Auditorium, 903 Main Street, here in the heart of Old Town Conyers. As I call this meeting to order, we will start with a special recognition and presentations Public Relations will be taking lead on that, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, we'll follow your lead.
My name is Kalonte Jamariyan Johnson.
My name is Crystal Johnson.
My name is Deputy Jededia Canty.
And I am the Auntie, or Kalonte Johnson.
And I'm the Public Information Officer here at Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. March 22nd, the victim was coming from one of the convenience stores nearby his home about 8:30 PM.
That they was coming from the Dollar June on the bicycle.
He left the convenience store, he was on his bike with his friend, along with his friend, returning home.
And he had came across the street, and Kyle was coming, but a car started coming, and he was screaming to Kyle to get out the road.
And that's when the incident happened.
The car hit him before he could get out the road.
The victim was 10 years old.
It was a hit-and-run, they hit him and left him.
The incident occurred on Ebenezer Road and Cherry Hill Lane. There was a witness, it was actually his friend, that witnessed the accident and ran home and alerted his auntie.
Kalonte was crying and...
So the witness, which was a 12-year-old, he described the vehicle that struck the victim.
He was able to tell the police officers which way the car was coming, and the description of car.
As a vehicle that was similar to his grandfather's vehicle, which was a Toyota Camry.
I explained to the officer that if the car looked like his Papa Eta, it was a gray Camry Toyota, because that's what he drives.
The deputy made a traffic stop on Ebenezer and send the drive, and conducted an interview, and later arrested the suspect.
If somebody do something bad, they should go to jail.
When it comes to young children, especially on bikes, it's so important that they wear their helmets.
I think kids should watch their surroundings.
They should always double-check before they cross the street.
When riding at night, reflective gear, something bright so you could be seen. They're extremely young, have a parent, a guardian, somebody that's young, that's older than them, they can look after them while crossing the street. Definitely, I believe, you know, if a citizen does see something, yeah, they can definitely be, you know, viewed as a hero. If you see something, say something.
A hero is to help somebody when they're in trouble. My hero is my pops and my mom.
It's a good thing, in a sense of him being recognized, but I also think that the takeaway from this should be, you should always listen to your parents. And Kalonte has been told numerous of times about riding his bike out down that street. I am so broken up over this whole situation. I just hate that a child life has been taken in this situation.
If I had one wish in this world, it would be to let everybody live.
Oh wow, let's, at this time, I'm gonna ask that Ms. Mims would meet me at the podium, along with the Commissioners, and we're gonna call up our Honorree to be presented. Ms. Mims, please read the reports, please.
Whereas Mr. Kalonte Johnson is a reserved, intelligent, young fifth grader, and whereas Ms. Kalonte's favorite subject in school is math, and when he isn't in school, he enjoys riding his bike, helping others around his neighborhood, and has an interest in sports. Whereas, he desires to be a football player when he grows up, whereas his favorite superheroes are Hulk, the Black Panther, and those that are close to home, his mom and pops. Whereas, with his loving, whereas his love for helping others, Kalonte showed bravery in providing information to Rockdale County Sheriff's Office deputies about the vehicle involved in the hit-and-run accident which incurred in March. Whereas, we commend Mr. Kalonte Johnson as a youth for having courage to speak out as a witness in the incident. We wish him and his family well, and encourage him and continue to stand in tall and courageous throughout all of his years. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim April 20th, 2021, in Rockdale County, as Mr. Kalonte Johnson Recognition Day.
Come on up, Mr. Johnson, so we can present you. Give him another round of applause as he's making his way to the podium. And as he's making his way to the podium, very briefly, Commissioners, I do just want to highlight him once again, because I think it's very brave and courageous for a young person to step forward and be able to take the lead in a situation like this. And I also wanna give hats off to Rockdale County Sheriff's Investigator, Mr. Grody Levitt, who contacted our office and said, "Mr. Chairman, I think we need to commend this young man for his bravery and his courage," and let's do that another, once again, and give him another round of applause. I also wanna take a moment and say to the parents of this young man, we certainly do appreciate your leadership and your guidance. I think this moment in time will resonate with him for now and years to come, but certainly for all of those parents throughout Rockdale County who are watching this broadcast, and those who are going to watch this broadcast, Commissioners, understand that it's okay to come forward with a high level of integrity and talk about what's going on in the community. And I certainly do appreciate his bravery and courage, and we certainly appreciate the support of the parents. Let's give the parents a round of applause. All right, thank you so much. Pleasure to be here, keep up the good work. Thank you all. All right. Get forward, okay? Thank you. Is Momma coming? Y'all, like, come on up, Momma. Y'all happy? Oh, okay, come on up, come on up. All family members, come on up, let's take a picture real quick. Absolutely. Come on in, Commissioners. There's another family member coming up. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Very good, very good.
All right, let's give him all another round of applause.
Very, want to say thank you to all of the members of the family. It certainly takes a village to raise our young people, and I wanna say thank you to our Community Relations Manager, Ms. Melissa Mims, for adding this to her list of things in the community, going out and making contact with the young man and his parents. We certainly do appreciate that. Okay, Chief, we've got that one checkmarked, and we're now moving to the Black History Video from, we're not doing the Black History Video.
Sir, we're saving that for April 27th.
Fantastic, all right, very good. So that takes care of that, Commissioners, and Director Relig, I think it's time for us to move into Agenda Review.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and we will go as fast as we can through our items. So we'll go ahead and start with the regular agenda, Item 2021-140, and that's with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the State Court, it's the DUI Court Supervised Treatment Program Grant, its change order number one to Contract 2020-76, it's an additional $2,486, it ends June 30th, 2021, and it's for ratification.
Commissioners, any comments or questions on this item? All right, next item, please.
141 is also with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the State Court, it's also DUI Court Supervised Treatment Program Grant, its change order number two to Contract 2020-76, this is an additional $43,964, it also ends June 30th, 2021, and is submitted for ratification.
Commissioners, any comments or questions on this item? Okay, next item, please.
All right, so the next couple are all with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. The next one, 142, is with the Superior Court, is for the Accountability Court Grant, its change order number two to Contract 2020-77, this is an additional $9,600, it ends June 30th, 2021, also submitted for ratification.
Okay, Commissioners, okay, keep it moving. Next item, please.
Item 143 is Criminal Justice Coordinating Council as well, with the Superior Court, is for the Accountability Court Grant, and its change order number three to Contract 2020-77, and it's an additional $19,000, it ends June 30th, 2021, and is also submitted for ratification.
Next item, please.
Item 144 is Criminal Justice Coordinating Council with the Superior Court, this is for the Resource Court Grant, its change order number one to Contract 2020-82, it's an additional $6,225, it ends June 30th, 2021, and is also submitted for ratification.
Next item, please.
All right, Item 145 is with Academy Lock &amp; Key Incorporated through the General Services Department, this is for alarm monitoring service for county facilities, it's a unit price contract, its change order number one to Contract 2020-140, it's to add additional So the next item is 146, is with Ambient Sounds Production LLC with the General Services Department, this is for the location release for the use of Costly Mill Park for filming CW Star Girl, is for signature only, and it's a ratification.
Next item, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll keep going until maybe I'm interrupted? Which, okay, all right, sounds good.
I support it.
You know how I can get to the zone, so please interrupt, all right?
All right, very good.
Item 147 is with Goldr Associates Incorporated through the General Services Department, this is for the permitting support for costly mill dredging, in the amount of $5,000, and it is for six months. Item 148 is for 13 various architectural and engineering firms for the General Services Department, this is for pre-qualifications list for consulting architectural and engineering services on an as-needed basis for the RFP number 20-13, these are one-year options to renew for four additional one-year periods, with the following companies Bennett &amp; Plus Incorporated, Engineered Systems and Services LLC, Jericho Design Group LLC, K Park Engineering LLC, Patrick &amp; Associates Incorporated, Raymond Engineering Georgia Incorporated, Croft &amp; Associates Incorporated, Prax IS3 LLC, Planners &amp; Engineers Collaborative Incorporated, Georgia Civil Incorporated, Nelco Architecture Incorporated, also known as Nelson, Lyman-Davison-Dooly Incorporated, and also Williams-Russell &amp; Johnson Incorporated.
So I was really happy to see that two of those companies are located here in Conyers.
Outstanding.
Yes.
Outstanding.
That's even better.
Outstanding, very good, that's always good news. Dooly noted. Next item.
Item number 149 is with the Georgia Department of Transportation through their Office of Program Delivery, this is through the General Services Department, this is for preliminary engineering on the River Trail Extension from the monastery to Johnson Park, in the amount of $200,000, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 150 is for Paymentis Corporation through the Water Resources Department, this is for the online by-phone payment processing, this is change order number one to Contract 2016-71, this is to amend the agreement to be not exclusive, to allow the user department to migrate to new payment processing vendor, and is effective July 1st, 2021. Item 151 is for Rochester &amp; Associates Incorporated through the Water Resources Department, this is for the River Street Water and Sewer Improvement Project, this is for the Professional Surveying and Easement Acquisition Services, in the amount of $88,400, and it's for three months. Item 152 is with All South Constructors Incorporated for the Water Resources Department, this is for the construction of the Backflow Prevention Device Installation at Gwinnett County Interconnects, in the amount of $248,932.20, this is for 120 calendar days from the notice to proceed. Item 153 is for CDM Smith Incorporated through the Water Resources Department, this is for Construction Management Services for the Snapping Shoals Wastewater Treatment Plant Construction Project, this is change order number two to Contract 2019-15, is to extend project duration due to some structural adjustments to the work and to abnormal weather delays, it's an additional $39,057, and is to extend substantial completion to March 29th, 2021. Item 154 is with Fintech Corporation through the Water Resources Department, this is for the Ozone Preventative Maintenance Service Program and Improvement, it's in an amount not to exceed $50,000, this is for one year with two one-year renewal options. Item 155 is for Lakeshore Engineering LLC through the Water Resources Department, this is for the Snapping Shoals Water Pollution Control Plant, its change order number four to Contract 2018-204, these are changes to the scope of work, an additional $162,185.16, and it's 862 days from the notice to proceed. Item 156 is with the Helix Group Incorporated for the Water Resources Department, this is for the Yellow River Sewer Crossing Rehabilitation, this is in the amount of $397,329.70, and it's 90 days from the notice to proceed. Item 157 is with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the Sheriff's Office, this is for the field trial to test the Axon aware, it's at no cost for a 30-day trial. Item 158 is for Watch Systems LLC for the Sheriff's Office, this is for the offender watch systems for sex offender notification, its change order number two to Contract 2015-55, it's the amount of $7,354.37 for the first year, and it is through July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. Item 155 is for QK4 Incorporated, this is through the Transportation Department, its change order number seven to Contract 2006-92, this is for the Klondike-McDaniel Mill-Hearse Road Intersection, it's to extend the contract time and add construction design services, it's an additional $25,000. Item 160 is for Corporate Environmental Risk Management, SERM, is for the Transportation Department, this is for the Program Support Services, its change order number four to Contract 2020-18, it's an additional funding of $55,750, is to extend the term by six months until December 31st, 2021. Item 161 is for Motorola Solutions, this is for EMA 911 Department, this is for the server replacement for the 911 CAD system, its change order number two to Contract 2019-215, is to add $178,963 for five years. Item 162 is for Kaiser Permanente Insurance Company through the Talent Management Department, this is for the Employee Major Medical, its change order number one to Contract 2020-48, is for the 2021 renewal, there's no cost increase, but the term is January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021. Item 163 is for the Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, also known as MetLife, through the Talent Management Department, this is for life and disability insurance, this is change order number one to Contract 2018-23, this is for the 2021 renewal, and the term is January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021. We still good?
Yes.
Okay. Item 164 is for Cigna Healthcare through the Talent Management Department, this is the Employee Major Medical, and its change order number one to Contract 2019-189, this is for the 2021 renewal as well, and the term is January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2021. Item 165 is for the Augusta Marriott through the Talent Management Department, this is for the Leadership Empowerment Training, it's in the amount of $26,021.76, and the term is May 18th, 2021, through May 21st, 2021, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 166 is the Dickerson Group Incorporated for the Stormwater Management Department, this is for the Rolling Acres Drainage Improvements, this is a deductive change order number one to Contract 2020-06, in the deductive amount of $196,368.43. Item 167 is with the Dickerson Group Incorporated for the Stormwater Management Department, this is for the Saxony Drive Culvert Replacement Project, this is also a deductive change order number two to Contract 2018-191, this is to deduct $106,777.80. Item 168 is with Southeastern Psychological Associates Incorporated, also known as SEPA, through the Juvenile Court, this is for Strengthening Families Program, in the amount of $6,800, and it ends September 30th, 2021. Item 169 is for Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC, Care of Market Development, Comcast Business, this is for the Technology Services Department, this is for cable TV for the Stormwater Management Department, and it's a signature only. Item 170 is for Houston-Galveston Area Council, HGAC, through the Fire Rescue Department, this is the Cooperative Purchasing Membership, known as HGAC Buy, the term ends December 31st, 2021, and auto-renewals annually.
So on that one, I wondered why we were joining the Houston-Galveston Council?
Come on up, Chief McDaniel.
It's a cohort, and what it does, it allows us to join in on purchases from other organizations, not just here in Georgia, so whereas we may be looking for a turnout gear that's $3,000, but if somewhere that purchased it for $1,200, then we can tag onto that as opposed to spending $3,000, so it's a cohort, and it's nationwide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, please.
Okay, thank you. Item 171 is with Peachtree Government Relations through the Board of Commissioners Office, this is for state legislative services, in the amount of $8,000 a month. Item 172 is a Memorandum of Understanding with the Tax Commissioner's Office for the Stormwater Fees on Property Tax Bills.
I think we wanna just take a moment first and say thank you to the Tax Commissioner, Commissioner Tisa Smart-Washington. Commissioners, that was a long project that we worked out through our leadership team, led by the Chief of Staff and members of the Stormwater Department. Chief, I'm gonna yield to you, you worked on that project.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. We are very grateful to our Tax Commissioner for allowing the Rockdale County government to put the stormwater fees on our tax bills this year. This agreement will encompass that, and her staff will assume the responsibility of not only placing these stormwater fees on the tax bill, but also doing the collections and making sure that the county receives the funds that are received as a result of the funds being paid on the property tax bills. The tax commissioner was outstanding to work with, we're very grateful that she is taking on this responsibility for us, and this agreement basically just puts everything into place as to who's gonna do what and who's responsible for what, so we're very grateful for that.
I have a quick question, is there gonna be an education component for the citizens so they'll know it's coming, know that their property won't be foreclosed on if they can't pay the stormwater part, all of the things that I know that there were high concerns about with putting it on the tax bill?
Yes, ma'am, there will be an educational component that is coming later in the year. In terms of making our citizens aware, that has already started with our Public Relations Department, and that has been blasted out not only through social media, but also through advertisements and our legal organ, which is the Rockdale Newton Citizen, and also on Common Ground News. Additionally, the educational component will start later this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that was a very good question coming from Commissioner Washington. This is brand-new for Rockdale County, but Commissioners, this certainly put us in line with what's happening in the metro region in terms of how we collect the fees for stormwater. For so long, we've been identifying the Stormwater Department as the star of the show. When we talk about economic development, we certainly can't talk about it without talking about the improvement of our infrastructure here in Rockdale County. And for so long, the Stormwater Department was a division, it is now a department. This action by the Tax Commissioner allows us to take the guesswork out of it, and for citizens to just incorporate that payment right with their tax bill each and every year. And I'm just gonna go dive deep a little bit more, Commissioner Washington, no, we're not gonna foreclose on anyone's property just because there's an issue with the $40 stormwater fee and the $100 stormwater fee that has been presented at this time, so we will not be doing that. One of the pluses about Rockdale County, we still very intimate government where we can work with our citizens, and we deal with them on a day-to-day basis. You live in a county where you can come in and talk to either one of your Commissioners and/or meet with your Chairman, and that's a plus. Out of 159 counties, there's not too many other places that can boast that they can actually come in and talk with their leadership. So thank you again to the Tax Commissioner and to Chief Cave and the team in the Stormwater Department for leading this effort.
Thank you. Item 173 is with Banks-Fenley-White &amp; Company, this is through the Finance Department, this is for the Financial Auditing Services, it's an amount not to exceed $94,150, this is one year with option to renew two additional years. Item 174 is a requisition with the EMA E911 Division, this is for Motorola Solutions, is for the CAD maintenance, in the amount of $61,429.79. Item 175 is a requisition with the Fire and Rescue Department, this is for chest compression systems, in the amount of $15,899.13. Item 176 is a requisition with Technology Services, this is for Proofpoint Enterprise for Targeted Attack Protection and Support, in the amount of $23,023, and it's submitted Item 177 is a requisition for Technology Services Department, this is for Insight Public Sector Incorporated for the Barracuda Network Renewal, it's for an email archiver, in the amount of $21,981.60. Item 178 is a requisition for the General Services Department, for Conkles Tree Service Incorporated, this is for grinding and removing of tree debris, in the amount of $33,456.95. This is for grinding and removing of tree debris in the amount of $33,456.95. Item 179 is a requisition for Water Resources Department. This is for the Water Treatment Plant. This is through Ecotec Incorporated. This is the repair of the Hypochlorite Generation System in the amount of $57,887 and it's submitted for ratification. Item 180 is a requisition with the Water Resources Department for Rochester and Associates Incorporated. This is for surveying services for the Scott and Honey Creek Pump Stations and Force Main in the amount of $89,850. Item 181 is a requisition with the Sheriff's Office. This is to remove and replace existing grinder system in the amount of $27,775. Item 182 is a requisition through the RDOT Transportation Department. This is a change order to purchase, oh, I'm sorry. This is a change order to purchase order number 118757. This is an additional $40,000 for the CEI Services for the Salem Gate Roadway Inspection. Item 183 is an expenditure request. This is for the Computer Software Incorporated CSI through the Technology to Services Department. This is for magnet maintenance and for web hosting in the amount of $26,438.37. Item 184 is an expenditure request through MCCI for the Technology Services Department. This is the annual support renewal for the Just FOIA Records Request in the amount of $15,388.75. Item 185 is an expenditure request through the Atlanta Regional Commission through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is the second quarter 2021 Regional Appropriation Dues in the amount of $27,120. Item 186 is a budget amendment that has been submitted from the Finance Department. I believe you have that in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
There is quite a bit there. If you would like me to read it out, I will. Would you like?
I would suggest just the surface of it, Director. I think both the Commissioners have been abreast on that. If you'd just give us the surface for the sake of the viewing audience.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this is a request to amend the 2021 operating budget by $510,000, $510,320 to fund positions in the Board of Commissioners and the Clerk of Court and for the E911 repair costs.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item 187 is a surplus of equipment for the Sheriff's Office, the State Court and General Services Department. And item 188 are amendments to the Employee and Pay and Classification Plan as submitted.
Mm-hmm.
And item 189 is a resolution allowing for the creation and appointment of a Deputy Chief District Attorney for Rockdale County, Georgia, and the Rockdale Judicial Circuit by the elected Rockdale County District Attorney and for the allocation of supplemental compensation for certain positions. Item 190 is for volunteer appointments to the Board of Adjustment and it would be Mr. Kari Lewis. Item 191 is the list of alcoholic beverage licenses that have been submitted. And item 192 is a resolution changing the date and time of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearings from the fourth Tuesday of the month at 9:00 a.m. to the fourth Thursday of the month at 7:00 p.m. and we will begin in June.
All righty.
Yes. So Mr. Chairman, I will ask for the next items that are listed on the agenda through the Planning and Development Department. I can read them out individually, although the first and second required statutory readings will not need to take place until next Tuesday.
Okay.
So I will defer to what you would like me to do with the rest of the items on the agenda for review.
Commissioners, I suggest that we allow the Executive Director role is just to simply read those that require reading tonight and those that can wait until the next meeting unless you're, if you're fine with that.
Well, we'll be fine because we, but next meeting, remember we have a very important obligation.
So I apologize. Let me clarify.
We're going to be in warp speed next.
Right.
That's right. We all three got.
So let me clarify. So the readings do have to take place next Tuesday because that's when you will vote. But if you have questions tonight for the Planning Director, now would be the time to ask those questions. So when we get into the board meeting next Tuesday, I can read, you can vote and we will go like that. But since it's a work session, you have the opportunity to ask the Director any questions you might have about these items that are before you right now.
Okay. So you'll call them out. If either one of the Commissioners have any questions or concerns, they'll bring it up and then Director Johnson will come forth and give us some feedback.
That sounds good. And so what I'll do is I'll refer to them as just their items tonight and then if you want, we'll stop and we'll have Director Johnson approach. So with the first two, it would be item 193 and 194.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any questions there, and these are for second reading. 195, 196, 197, and 198. Those are all up for second reading next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to go have Director Johnson go over those.
Yes. Okay. That sounds good.
Come on up Director Johnson. And which ones in particular Commissioner?
The ones that are, that we're going to have a second reading on next week.
All right. Very good.
So we will, if that's all right with you Director Johnson, we'll start with item 193. And then if you could go through 198 and kind of explain each one of them because they're up for second read next Tuesday.
Okay. Sure. No problem. Okay. So 193 is, well, 193, there are two items for 193. One is for a future land use amendment and one is for rezoning. They're both for Zero Salem Road Southeast. This is again, second reading. We presented this to the PC last month.
The Planning Commission.
To the Planning Commission last month. Yes, sir. It is to, the rezoning is to change from C2 general commercial to RM multifamily and the future land use is going from high-density residential, commercial. This is an area, you guys want detailed information about the, or how detailed do you want me to?
I need it because I'm getting old.
Yeah, I didn't want to get too deep in the weeds. I wasn't sure.
So what I would suggest, I think for the sake of going through each of these as the Commissioner has requested, Director Johnson, if you would give us the surface information.
Sure.
If there's any in-depth inquiry coming from either the Commissioners, they'll bring forth a question. Just give us the cake and keep it moving.
All right. With this particular one, it's a proposal for 105-unit town home development. 113 acres. It's across from the future proposed Salem Gates, Salem Gates Development, high-density commercial in the city of Conyers. And staff supported this one. We thought would be ideal. Even though it's currently C2, that parcel is not suitable because there is a creek or stream running through it. And so it will be suitable for some dense 105-unit townhomes. I think it will be suitable for the future proposed commercial in the Salem Gate subdivision, which is across the street in the city of Conyers. Plus it's surrounded on all sides by both other townhomes as well as some single family, as well as a lot of the commercials. So, and it, so we think it makes sense. So that's for those two.
So what was the Planning Commission's recommendation?
They voted to deny that one.
And why?
It was a situation where they felt as though, this is one of, this is the one that kind of started, initiated that, the letter, email that you all received, Ms. Williams, regarding the concern about the abundance of townhome requests and about changing land uses that were slated for anything non-residential to residential. And they made a good point in that letter, as I mentioned to you on our last Zoom call. But I think it's a case-by-case basis. I don't think it needs to be a blanket statement. Now, if this was something that was out in the periphery of the county where it was industrial zoned or something that was for a large area that didn't have infrastructure, that was not surrounded by other dense development, I would take that same position. But again, this is closer to the city of Conyers. There's other dense development around it and I mentioned the forthcoming Salem Gate subdivision. And as you know, rooftops help drive development. And so by putting 105 units on this site, yes, it is, it was proposed to be C2 commercial in the future. But if you look at that terrain with the creek running through it, it's limited what you can do with it. And so.
And Director Johnson, what was the reason for denial from the Planning Commission?
Because it was one of those situations, again, where they thought that, I think it just fell into a trap, fell into a situation where they, they feel as though we were allowing several projects that were future zoned, non-residential to residential. And so they wanted to, this is where they suggested we may look at it moratorium or something of that sort. They were concerned about schools. They were concerned about infrastructure, water, sewer. And we found data that did not support either of that. So this was, I think, that one project that started that and initiated the email that you all received a week from that particular Thursday.
Okay. Okay.
But from a staff perspective, it was, it's a good project. It makes sense.
And did you say this is near the new Salem Gate?
Right across the street. Yes, ma'am.
Markets Place, whatever the name of that is.
In the city of Conyers. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, 194, text amendment 2021-05. This is an ordinance to amend the ordinance for townhome revision. This is something again that was generated by both staff as well as a request by Commissioner Washington. This is where we went from mandatory two-car garages and initially we said no more than eight units. We went back and revised it, listen to you Commissioner Williams, to a maximum of six units. And so this is a second reading for that. And you guys have heard this, you have heard this one before as well.
It's just been a while.
Right. It's been a month, I guess, a little over a month and a half. Yeah. So. All right. That's what that one's for. Okay. So a revision of our existing townhome conditions. And again, we were trying to be consistent with the city of Conyers because of the fact they have a major overhaul for their townhome development since we are close in certain areas to their city borders when it comes to townhome and mixed use. We wanted to be consistent as possible. So that was the reason for that one. Next item, 2021-195, text amendment. This is one that deals with de-watering and other purposes, a second reading. We brought this to you before. De-watering is taking soil and dirt, earth from a certain location, removing the oxygen and other minerals from it and mixing it with cement and taking it back to that particular site to help reinforce utilities. And so this is something that, it's, I guess, you can consider it an economic development function as well. The state of Georgia had mandated the operational aspect of this. This will be, will help the county for locations. Again, it's a case-by-case basis. You have to be 250-foot buffer all around. Has to be in the center of your property. So it can't work everywhere. But this is the second time we brought this to y'all as well.
Quick question. Have we, have we taken this to our water and soil conservation Kenny Johnson's?
If you recall, yes ma'am, on the Zoom call, he was actually one of the speakers and he was in support of it as well. Talked about the need for, it could help reinforce, again, taking the soil, removing it, removing some of the air and oxygen out of it, mixing it with cement, bringing it back to that particular area. Again, when you're laying utilities and other elements, it helps to reinforce the ground.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Let's see. The next item, next two items, 2021-196 and 197 are text amendments for, one is for table of permitted uses. One is for standards of use development. And this is a second reading. This is where we had definitions. This will be, this item will come up frequently. When there is definitions that are inconsistent, permitted use tables that are inconsistent, as well as, oh gosh, I'm running a blank here. But for instance, our ordinance, apparently 2006, there were some changes to the ordinance. There are a lot of developments that are actually on the ground now that are considered legally non-conforming. And we wanted to try to be as, I guess, consistent as possible. And so there will be several items that will come up where, and it's both staff-generated as well as we've gotten calls from developers, applicants about wanting to do certain types of.
So this is a housekeeping measure.
And it's more of a housekeeping, a scriptish errors. And this is where we showed you guys tables where we allowing certain things in the manufacturing, industrial areas are. And one of the items would be, for instance, we had a conversation with you Commissioner Williams regarding halfway houses, drug rehabs. Initially, we were limiting them to, according to the current ordinance, in certain areas, non-residential. Talked to you, we're like, did some research. We can allow them in residential areas, but following state guidelines, has to be a special use permit. Has to be a public comment period on that of six weeks. So that's just, there's several examples in here. So without, you know, going into the details. But this will come up probably every month because we're trying to clean up our, trying to square up our ordinance and all.
Good job, sir. Next item.
Okay. Cool. All right. Let's see. 2021-198, text amendment is to, this is for, let's see.
So Director Johnson, let me just intervene for a moment. So I think you're like one number off. So that concludes all the second reads for vote next week. So now we start 2021-199 through.
198.
The very end.
Yeah, 198. Those were first readings, right? The ones I was about to read.
199. I apologize. I'm not sure what agenda that you're looking at. But anyway, it's 199 through 214. Those will all be for first reads next Tuesday.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So you want me to?
Did y'all have any questions about the first reads?
No, we'll hear all that information.
Okay. Good. That sounds good.
Well, let's keep moving.
Sounds good. Okay. Well.
Thank you Director Johnson.
Yes, thank you. We are back to the work session agenda to public comment.
Oh, wow.
I know.
All right. So we are down to public.
We're down to public comment.
Public comment. Wow. So.
I have not received any cards, but if someone wanted to speak and has their card.
I'm impressed.
We are cooking with gas, Commissioner Washington.
Exactly. He must have been.
Still light outside.
I know.
If you can keep it, if you can keep it sharp.
We're going to get dinner tonight.
I know. It looks like we have someone, so I'll go ahead and start reading if that's all right. Okay. We'll keep it going. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the Chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. The way you spring up those stairs make me look bad. I remember when I could just. Did you see how she just leaped up there like a?
A gazelle?
Yes.
You can do that when you're young.
Right. Right. I'd have to watch each and every one of those steps coming up.
You want to impress me. Forget how fast we've gone to leap up those stairs.
E Phat Walker is our speaker up for public comment. Come on up, Ms. Walker. And you don't have to take it to the stairs. You use the podium right there.
But if you want to impress me.
Good evening. Good evening, board, and thank you so much for this moment. My name is E Phat Walker, Executive Director of Community Action Now. I want to make a quick announcement. I also want to introduce the gentleman that's standing right next to me. You can take a moment.
My name is James Sears and I represent Antioch East AB Church.
Good evening, Ms. Sears.
Good evening.
Ms. Walker.
Quick, quick announcement. Community Action Now has launched in partnership with Antioch and multiple partners, Rock the Spread, Rockdale COVID-19 Testing and Free Vaccines. We have 200 vaccines that we need to get rid of this weekend. We're going to be at the VFW, 1432 VFW Drive, Saturday the 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. On Saturday, we're going to be at Antioch AME East Church, Sunday, April 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. In order to register, please go to our website.
I'm also want to encourage you to get that to our Public Relations Department. There are countless numbers of residents throughout Rockdale County who certainly would like to take advantage of all 200 of those vaccines you have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, any other?
That's all I had.
Okay, all right, well, we're going to keep it moving, going right into board comment, starting with Commissioner Washington.
Number one, I would like to thank you, Chairman, for your leadership as well as the, our tax commissioner for getting the stormwater bills on our, our tax bill. That's going to be a tremendous help to improving our infrastructure and just helping with everything regarding our stormwater utility. So thank you and thank Commissioner Tisa Washington for that. Also, I'd like to salute the valedictorians and salutatorians for Rockdale County. Those have been announced. But I'd like to say a special thank you to Ms. Gabrielle Woods, who is our juvenile court judge's daughter. She is the valedictorian for the magnet school. So I've watched this young lady grow up, very intelligent, of course, and she has selected Howard University to, to attend Howard. So I'm super proud of her and I'm, I know Judge Wood is beaming from ear to ear, as is her husband, David, and I'm just super proud of them. In line with the vaccinations, I, along with our school board member Pam Brown, we will be hosting a vaccination, well, we'll be hosting vaccinations, I don't know, or distributing vaccinations, I don't know what word to use. But we'll, every first Saturday of the month, from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning to 3 o'clock in the afternoon at JP Carr. We, this is a joint effort, Walgreens is going to be one of our partners. And we'll be doing this from May to December of the year. So we really want everybody to come out and get vaccinated. I'll have a flyer that will be distributed, PR will get this, we're working on that.
Okay.
And we will, we really want you all to get vaccinated. I am now fully vaccinated, so I'm ready to go everywhere.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm encouraging everybody to get vaccinated. My experience wasn't as bad as everybody else's, or a lot of people that I've heard. So it's, it doesn't have to be. But I do want to encourage those in vaccinations. Quick thing on economic development, we have done our first rounds of interviews for our new Economic Development Director. We are very, very pleased with the candidates that we have interviewed and we do our second round next week. So hopefully we'll have one in place very soon. And no matter who is selected, you all are going to be very, very impressed. I was, it's going to be a very, very tough decision. But with that, I do want to make a quick, say something quickly about economic development. I had the pleasure of going to look at the new Summer Hill development. Summer Hill, of course, everybody knows how old it is and historic, let me say historic, Summer Hill is, but they have revitalized, they're in the process of revitalizing that entire segment. And one of the things that is continuously being iterated is the need for different types of housing, not just, not just town homes, but single-family homes, apartments, different living situations so that you can draw people in that are going to eat your, there were, they had bakeries down there and they had pizza parlors and they had just all kinds of different artisan foods, just different things. So, but you have to have a certain type of people that are even going to want to spend that money that way. So as we talk about economic development, as we talk about moving Rockdale County into the 21st century, as far as economic development, we do need to be open to different types of housing and in different places. And I know the planning commission voted for denial of that particular special use permit or rezoning application. But I just want to say that that's right in line with exactly what the economic development forecasters are saying. You need things like that to drive that commercial, especially since it's going to be right at one of the major businesses that we have invested.
Right.
In Rockdale County. So as we, as I move and learn about economic development, hopefully I can educate as we move forward and this can be a, a community economic development venture. And that's it, that's all I have.
All right, fantastic. Commissioner Williams?
Well, I'm just really happy to be here in person.
Yes.
It's been over a year.
Yes.
Since I've attended a board meeting in person. And so I'm really pleased to be here.
Glad to have you too.
I, you know, have had my vaccinations and, and everyone in my house has. And I too am feeling a little more comfortable, though I'm still wearing my mask when I go out and trying to social distance. But, but it, it feels a whole lot better than, than that. So I'm, I'm really pleased to be here tonight. Just a couple of things, let me start with the, the housing that you were talking about. I've had two conversations in the last few weeks with people who have talked about affordable housing. And as we talked about it, we don't want to make large homes that are just built really cheaply and, and neighborhoods are put together, you know, just in a cheap way. But with the rising, I mean phenomenally rising cost of construction right now, tiny homes came up. That it would be, we would rather, they would rather, I would rather have sub-quality homes that are just smaller, which are, are really applicable for retirees and for young professionals.
Veterans.
And so it's going to require a real close look at our zoning. And I, and I, that's one of the things that I would really like to work on in the next couple of months is that zoning issue that I think it requires 1600 or 1800 square feet minimum for a, a home in Rockdale County. And, and maybe it's an idea where, you know, we need to have like an overlay of where these certain communities can be. But I have visited over the last few months, several different neighborhoods that included town homes, single-family homes, and tiny homes. And they were really very, very nice. You know, I think any of us would not have, have a problem living in, in those communities. But that's one way to address and look at affordable housing because, again, the price of housing is just going, is skyrocketing. So we want to take that into consideration. The other thing I wanted to talk about was Georgia Piedmont Technical College. I was really glad to drive past the Career Academy and see on the marquee there, the Career Academy at the top and Georgia Piedmont Technical College right underneath it. That is really a big deal for Rockdale County.
It is.
They are doing some wonderful things with our Accountability Court participants in getting them into enrolled in programs. They graduated a class in October and every one of them got a job offer. And they were all 15, no, I think it was, I think the lowest was like $17 an hour. And then they went up from there. And they have just started their second class. I was at a drug court graduation a couple of weeks ago and a young man came up to me so excited because he was in this program, he'd spent a couple of years in prison, he was really excited about getting some new skills and being able to get back on his feet. And I assured him that in the class that graduated previously, a number of those folks had criminal backgrounds but were able to get jobs. And so that's another component of our economic development is education. Providing those opportunities for our citizens and having the trained, skilled workforce that companies are looking for when they come here. And that's one of the benefits too of Georgia Piedmont is they, they partner with local businesses to find out what exactly it is that they need. And so one of the young men I know finished that, that program in October in mechatronics. He's now working for, he has a German apprenticeship here in Conyers with Havers. There's a second part to that name of that company and I can't remember right now. But they're located right here in Conyers. And he works, he works a half a day and goes to school a half a day at Georgia Piedmont. And they are connecting exactly what he's learning at work with what they're teaching. And the company is paying him full-time.
Oh, wow.
With full-time benefits.
I'm doing my life on.
So, so I couldn't be more pleased to see that their name up on that marquee.
Very good.
I think we need to continue to look. I had a conversation with one of the deans at Kennesaw State University a week or so ago. And because I'm, they have a mechatronics program because my son just graduated from it last year. And I said, wouldn't it be great if you had a satellite, you know, center here where these students who are learning the basics of mechatronics could then move into your engineering program? And so, you know, there's lots of opportunities and we know it takes time and it takes lots of conversations, but I'm, I'm excited about the possibilities of, of educational opportunities here in Rockdale. That's it.
All right, okay. The pressure's on me and I want to be as quick as possible. There's, I'm picking up where you left off. There are jobs everywhere throughout Rockdale County. Every other two to three businesses has a help-wanted job sign posted out. Retail, hospitality, industry, industrial, manufacturing, you name it, everyone is hiring. And I continue to get these calls in from HR directors saying that they're having difficulty finding people who really want to work. We actually have experienced some of that in our own talent management department as well. So I wanted to point that out. The widening project that's taking place on Sigmund Road is, is being led by the ER Snell Road Construction Company. And they are interested, highly interested in hiring local Rockdale residents. So hopefully folks who are listening and watching this broadcast will hear that. ER Snell Road Construction Company is doing our widening project over on Sigmund Road, right there in front of the Voices of Faith Church. So we encourage you to contact ER Snell. If you need more information, you can actually contact the Rockdale Department of Transportation and they'll be glad to pass the information on to you. But that's the big plus, that a vendor who's doing business with the county is actually going to be hiring some local residents here in Rockdale County where the work is going to take place. The next thing I want to do is sort of kind of commissioners give a shout out to our Emergency 911 Division. Through E911, this is often a division that's not talked about a lot because they are behind the scenes. But all of us know that Emergency 911 is the brain, the heartbeat of all of our first responders and public safety here in Rockdale County. So I want to say thank you to all of them because throughout this pandemic, and although the pandemic is not over, they've had to really do some creative scheduling. And I think that's probably the best way, Director Morgan, that I can say it, because they've had some people who were impacted by COVID, folks were out and a lot of things happened. So I really want to say thank you to them. Thank you to the folks over at the Emergency 911 Center for Rockdale County. We appreciate you being dedicated to your work and keeping us safe here in Rockdale County. And commissioners, I just want to pause a moment just to say that when you get a chance in your schedules, please drop by. They really want to see the commissioners, myself, Chief Gabe, and Director Morgan has made a few trips over there. We've also taken them some nice lunch. But they just want to know that we care about them and that you all know that they're there. So I wanted to point that out, okay? Also, the community-wide cleanup is going to take place on Saturday, May the 1st, Saturday, May 1st, 8:00 a.m. It's a reporting time over at 1400 Parker Road. I don't know what has happened, but our roadways throughout Rockdale County are not looking all that good. And our community improvement team, along with the code enforcement team, have been working day in and day out. And we're having a lot of issues with apartment complexes where people are forgetting to put their bags of trash in the dumpster dumpsters before they drive out onto the roadway. Well, you've heard me talk about this before. When that bag falls off the vehicle, another vehicle comes along and bag is burst and trash is strung all over the place. So community improvement, the wonderful Corey Brown tells me, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to the same places over and over and over again. And we've got a lot, over 133 miles of road in Rockdale County and to repeat some of those places. On May 1st, we're going to be having a community countywide cleanup here in the county. We are interested in volunteers. You can also contact the Public Relations Department, the community relations manager. If you know someone who is interested, we're offering $10 an hour for that one day of service. If you know some young people who want to make a little change, and let me just throw that in there, because this is going to take place on May 1st. Mother's Day is on May 9th. So all the young people who've not had an opportunity to earn a little extra cash to buy mom something for Mother's Day, this is an excellent opportunity to do that. Come out and you'll get paid and you'll be able to go and buy mom a nice thank you gift for Mother's Day at the same time. Just throw that.
I'm sending cash in.
Yes. We, we've got to make sure we take care of mom. So I really wanted to point that out, what's going on in the community and say thank you to all of our departments. We are preparing, we've been receiving so many calls, the weather's looking good, the seasons are changing. We are still in a pandemic. We still have protocols that we are following by. And we will be making announcements. So we encourage all of our residents to pay attention to Rockdale Channel 23 as well as our website for information about opening of different facilities throughout Rockdale County. I am pleased to announce that we will be bringing back. The Summer Concert Series will kick off on July the 25th. That's right, it'll be the fourth Sunday of each month, that's July, August, September, and October, the last Sunday of each one of those months. We'll have a fantastic band. We'll be giving more information about that. We're going to have a big kickoff on the 25th of July. Make sure you're able to come out, bring your lawn chairs and we're excited. So things are happening throughout the county. In the spirit of economic development, if you have not been moving around Rockdale County, you're missing all of the things that are taking place. There's a lot going on. Commissioner Williams talked about residential development, talking to several realtors the other day, and now one house has 60 people trying to buy one house in less than 30 days. As soon as the homes are built in the county and throughout the community, the house is occupied. So it's really a good thing for planning and development, for our tax base here in Rockdale County. And I'm so proud, commissioners, that the, the basic price point for these homes are yielding the kind of residence that will support the future of Rockdale County in a positive and progressive way. So I just wanted to say that. And I think you're right on point about being creative with it. Both of you have mentioned tonight about different types of housing that can meet the demographic of all of the people in Rockdale County. That's all I have. of all of the people in Rockdale County. That, that's all I have. Director Relig, is there any need for executive session? I know, I know, I know.
Always like, always like flipping her, but I'm going to get right to it.
Don't get excited, Director Sanders, don't get excited.
No, Mr. Chairman.
She's over there wiggling her leg like she's.
I know. No, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, there's no need for executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you commissioners. This meeting is adjourned.